Let's call to order the virtual common council meeting for the city of Milton. Tuesday, August 17th at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
Any notice was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I would move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries and we have an agenda. Pledge of allegiance. You can see the flag behind Inga, her right shoulder. So if we could say the pledge of allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. If there is a specific agenda item for your area, then you can speak during that agenda item or you can speak now. Inga, do you see anybody in the waiting room?
No, there's no one in the waiting room right now.
Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Did you get that Jenny?
I had Rouge and then Bill, is that correct? For a second?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Then I did. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding snow removal fees. 616 Rogers Street and we have a Mr., I'm not going to pronounce your last name correctly, so you can fill in the blank. Is here to speak about that. If you want to go ahead and share your name, your address, and go ahead and give us your information.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Ray Chaponiac, 616 Rogers Street. Most recently from Salt Lake City, but now a resident of Milton and I'm a teacher. I, I most recently taught sixth grade math. Here I am. Through the pandemic, it became apparent that sixth grade math wasn't going to work out so much. So I began looking into retirement options. My sister lives in Edgerton and so I fell in love with Milton. I don't know, something about the two downtowns, the, the old college, the Milton House, the Underground Railroad. It just seemed like a nice place to live. Long story short, I bought the house last summer and planned on moving in either this summer or next summer, but pandemic got longer, so it was this summer. My tenants moved out two days after I got here. That was July 5th. And that first week in July, I got two notices, two bills from the city. The bills were a water and sewer bill for over $1,300 and the snow removal bill for over $300. I had never seen these bills before. They were never forwarded to me in Salt Lake City. And it was quite a shock when I got them. My tenants were, had told me they would sign up for water with the city and they were responsible for that payment. They never did. And the snow removal thing, I was totally blindsided by and they never told me about it. And I never saw the bills until the first week in July when I came here. So I'm asking for some forgiveness, some consideration and forgiveness on your part for, for all parts of those bills.
Thank you very much. Council, there's some memos and information that was attached to this item. And does anybody have any questions or comments? And I'll start with Bill.
No comment at this point.
And Ryan, any questions or comments?
Does Al or Howie want to say anything about it at all? Because usually I think they chime in before. So I was just curious if they had anything they wanted to add on their side.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add is that, yeah, what we included in the agenda was the certified letter that we had sent. And in Ray's correct, it went to the 616 Rogers Street. Our, our practice, because it's really the only way we could ever do it is to send the information to what's on the tax bill. So that's where the tax bill goes. We wouldn't know if somebody had an alternate address unless they were to reach out to us. There's just no way of, of us knowing that. So that just shows where the information went. I was unaware until just a moment ago that Ray was looking for forgiveness on the water bill as well. So we don't have any information on that included in the packet. I was under the impression this was just for the snow removal portion. So that's, that's all I have. I think Dan could probably comment on the water bill piece, but certainly Howie can jump in too.
Mark S.
Yes. As you might anticipate, since the water bill is not on the agenda, that's not a proper subject for discussion tonight. That could be brought up in another meeting, but, but the agenda as I observed is, is for the snow removal fees. So for that reason alone, it wouldn't be appropriate to engage in, engage in a discussion on it. But you have a notice of it, it can certainly, as I said, be put on a future agenda and that would give staff time to look into that ahead of time as well.
One other question I had was, what have we done as past practice in this situation?
And so this would just be in regards to snow removal, Ryan?
Correct. Just the snow removal. That's what we're talking about right now. What have we done as past practice for this? Or Howie, Al, has a question for you guys?
Well, when, when people have come before the council or just in general?
With this situation has occurred in the past, what have we done in the past? I just want to have that maybe Howie or Al chime in on that as to what we, how we've handled this in the past to some extent. So that it's all here as part of the discussion.
You, last time this happened, council sent it to public works committee and they said, asked them if we should follow the standard procedure. And they voted that we should follow the standard procedure, which is what we did. Sent it to the tax person. Gave them all the notices and sent a certified letter. So what public works committee had said was we should follow the standard procedure, which is what happened. And that's what council wanted us to do. So they weren't, you weren't worried about what happened in the past. You wanted it relooked at. And this is what public works committee decided.
Oh, in the past, we haven't provided any relief then for the snow removal fees or the reinspection fees is what you're saying?
No, you have. You have. You haven't gone by standard procedure in the past. What you had, you did that last winter. But then you said to go to public works committee and you would follow their recommendation. So that's why it's sent out this way.
Okay, got it. Teresa, any questions or comments?
No, I'm still confused how it just ended up unclaimed and there were no steps to follow through by the owner. That seemed, that's confusing on the other end.
So do you have a specific question that you would like to ask him?
You know, I guess so, that, you know, why there weren't any steps in place to deal with a property when they didn't live here and own the property?
My sister was quote unquote managing the property for me. I, I, the tenants had my number. I was in contact with them maybe three or four times over the year. It was just never mentioned that those letters came. I had no idea. I was told perhaps that the title company didn't forward my Salt Lake City address to the city of Milton. But that there was no attempt to, to do that, to forward those letters to me. I certainly would have done something about it if I had known. Yeah. So I bet I had no idea what was happening.
Teresa, do you have any follow-up questions?
No.
Linda, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I was kind of wondering the same thing that Teresa was. I mean, this part of the country, we do get a lot of snow and this particular property is on one of the main routes that our kids take to school. You know, I'm, I mean, that's, that's what my big concern is. And that's why we have the policies that we do. I specifically remember the last situation where we were asked to do something and I requested it go back to the public works. And the reason for that was because those are our citizens. And if, if they believe that this is something that we need to continue to follow through with, then I think that we need to do that. I'm sorry that it, this is how you were welcomed into Milton, but.
No, I, I totally agree with the policy. I, I think it's smart and safe. I just was totally unaware of it. And there was no attempt to make me aware of it. I could have done something about it.
Well, some of that responsibility comes on you. We do not, you know, put all those policies out one by one to owners. You know, the city policies are posted on our website and on all cities' websites, all of their policies and procedures. And, and again, as, as Linda said, that we don't feel great about that being a welcome to you to have that penalty as our way to meet, but those are always posted everywhere. So some responsibility does rest on the new owner. And to particularly to point out to your new tenants and also to make them somewhat responsible, either financially or in some other manner.
And, and I would, I intend to follow through with that. Yet I still believe that there's some glitch respectfully in the system that I was not made aware through the title company or whatever, that I didn't live in the house and it wasn't. The bills weren't sent to me. I'm sorry.
We have this information in our quarterly newsletters that come out that are always posted on our city website. I mean, I, I've been a, I've been a landlord before, not here in Milton, but in other, in another city. And you know, those are the things that, those are the things that you have to look out for is, you know, your name is on the property. Who is going to be on, who is going to be responsible for inclement weather or what if we had a tornado come through? And there was some type of damage. I mean, like I said, I'm sorry that this is how we have to meet, but you know, these policies are, are, are put in place for specific reasons. And it's, we cannot mail out information continually to every single property owner to remind them of the things that they need to be looking at.
And I totally agree with them. And I, I agree with the policy and I'm not arguing that at all. I just believe that I should have gotten the bills at my address in Salt Lake City. And, and I didn't, so I could not do anything about it. I had, I just didn't.
I guess I would ask, you know, what could the city have done differently? You know, a certified letter was sent to the address of record. What, what else should the city have done? I mean, the city really does not want to be in the snow removal business. And in fact, would wish that the situation never happened.
I know.
But there are only so many steps that can be taken. Are there suggestions?
I, I would, I don't know how the city got my name in the first place. Somehow with the title company, I, I wish someone had followed through to get my address, to get my address. Yeah, because I never lived here. I, I planned on living here. I am living here, starting tomorrow in this house.
Oh no.
But I, I had, yeah, I had no, no clue.
To answer his question, and I certainly echo everybody else's comments, it's really unfortunate that this is kind of the first way that we're meeting and we're glad that you chose Milton. And this is really an unfortunate situation for you and for us. But you know, from the city's perspective, we pull information off the tax bill. That's the, that's the name and address of record. That's the only thing we could, we could go off of. There's no secondary listing. And a lot of times when properties are owned by someone who doesn't live at that address, they will list the property owner's name and the property owner's home address, and then they will list a site address. And the site addressed is attached to the actual parcel. In your case, I'm looking at your tax bill right now. It lists your name and your address as 616 Rogers and the site address is 616 Rogers. There would have been no way for us to even know you didn't live there. We don't have a landlord database. We don't, we don't require landlords to register like they do in some other communities. So we would have, we would have had no, we would, there's no way we would have known that you didn't live there. That's, that's the, that's the name and address of record. Even if the title team would have contacted us, I don't think it would have changed the process. Because that's, Rock County believes you live there. So that's what we go off of. We don't have it, we don't have like a secondary list of addresses.
How, how would you receive your tax bill? Did your tax bill arrive?
No, no, it's through the, I just paid the mortgage through the title company.
Okay, so the timing was.
Evan, have any questions or comments?
No, not at this time.
Larry?
Yes, I do. I appreciate your situation. I've been a landlord for many years, both in commercial property and residential property. What I would encourage you to do if you haven't done it so is pursue small claims procedures against your tenant. They were obligated to pay that from what you said earlier and they didn't pay it. And that's not fair to you as a landlord. So small claims procedure, you could pursue that with them. In terms of relief, I believe in the past, we have worked out a payment plan. So if it's an issue of, it's a lot of money, 13, well, $300, right? So for the, for the, what you owe. And I believe we have in the past, I could be wrong on that, Dan, but I believe we've worked it out with people that they could pay over a reasonable amount of time. So that might be an alternative for you.
Anything else for anyone? Is there any action that the council would like to take?
Do we need to make a motion, Mark?
Well, you're not required to. If you don't take, make, take any action, then nothing will happen. Or you can take specific action and either approve or deny or something in between so that, so that there's a resolution of the request, I guess.
I'll make a motion to deny the request for the snow removal fees at 616 Rogers Street.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Does anybody have any further questions or comments?
I'm glad that we have a public works committee meeting tomorrow night.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed?
Nay.
You're opposed to not taking action, Larry?
Yes.
To that, to denying the request? Okay.
Yes.
Um, that's all we have for tonight. Thank you for coming to city council. And as you know, now that you're a resident of the city, you can run for council or mayor if you so desire.
Ray, what I would suggest is tomorrow, give a call up to city hall about the water bill situation. And you can either talk to Dan, who is on the call here right now, or Kerry Cheeseborough down in Public Works. And they can talk through the water bill issue with you.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright. Thank you. And moving on, discussion and possible action regarding MS4 annual report and total maximum daily load compliance.
Mark, do you feel up to taking this one way up, way, way up there?
Yeah, I think so. It looks like it's working alright. So this is to, for our DNR permit, there's some items we have to update, one being our stormwater modeling and basically analyze our stormwater system to ensure that we're doing the appropriate amount of stormwater treatment and removal of the nutrients that are required to be removed. This work order would task Baxter and Woodman with completing the model update. There is also some work involved with just reviewing some of our other materials that are in the permit requirements, such as public information documents and other, you know, standard kind of normal documents. So there's not a ton of time with that, but we're just asking them to review it for any updates that they may find or know of. But the bulk of the work really is the modeling and then incorporating some of that into our mapping system.
Larry, any questions or comments?
Well, I do not think.
Devin?
No questions.
Linda?
How often do you, do we generally have to do this, Mark? I'm wondering, is this something that we should be putting in our budgets, our long-range budgets?
How we may recall when the last time the stormwater, water model was looked at in depth, I think it was probably well over 10 years ago. But it is something that it certainly never hurts to keep up to date. And there have been a few updates, but nothing to this level because it hasn't been required until now. As far as budgeting, I think it's a good thing to include in capital improvement planning or other budgeting processes. Looking at stormwater budgets as a whole, this is a big piece of the modeling.
Yeah, it's been, it's been more than five years, maybe not quite eight years, but this is new requirements for the new permit too. Where you have to, you just have to make sure you're doing everything the right way. And the modeling is a requirement to make sure that, you know, just our storm ponds are meeting all the requirements. Besides education, like Mark said, some of those other things, so.
Linda, anything else?
No thanks.
Teresa?
No.
Ryan?
No questions or comments?
Phil?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
Is the motion to accept the report or to?
It would be to approve the work order from Baxter and Woodman to, I gotta read it for you here again. Approve the work order for engineering services in the amount of $33,300 for the MS4 assistance.
I would move what Mark just said.
I'll second that.
Right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding declaring the 1997 W4 dump truck as surplus equipment.
Okay, when, working with the new mechanics, when we had got some of the other smaller trucks, this was the original leaf truck that we had. And that has to do with the age of it and also was used as a regular smaller dump truck before that. But we at first thought we could take the box off of it and make it a flatbed truck. But after that got taken off, it's so rusted and would need so much repair that it would be better off surplusing it and just not having it on site anymore, just because the expense. You can renovate anything, but the expense wouldn't be worth it for this one. But we'd like a declared surplus so we could sell it at the state auction.
Any questions or comments? Brian?
No questions or comments?
Phil?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Devin?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
I would move that we declare the 1997 W4 dump truck as surplus.
I'll second.
There's a motion and the whole council second set. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant application for Stockman Property Development LLC at 648 College Street.
So this item is, as you may recall, Mr. Stockman was in front of this board earlier this year to receive one of these grants for 644 College Street, which is still underway. He's also already revitalized 650 College Street, which is now home of Hattie and Elsie's. He's looking for a commercial facade grant in the amount of $5,000 this time to redo the facade of that building, which is in between the other two buildings that he's already, that he has already remodeled to kind of match the exterior facade of those facilities as well. He's done a great job with the other two buildings. There's no reason to think that he wouldn't do the same on this one. So we are in support of this facade grant. His site plan went before the plan commission earlier today and was unanimously approved.
Larry, any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Linda?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the facade.
Wait, just wait, I gotta ask if anybody else has questions or comments.
Okay, sorry.
Devin? Teresa?
No, it did look well outlined.
Ryan?
No questions or comments?
Phil?
No.
Okay, Linda, I know you can't wait.
I'll make a motion to approve the commercial facade grant application for Stockman Properties.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Do you need the address or?
Yes, I think it would be advisable, 648 College Street.
648 College Street in the amount of $5,000.
There's a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding 2021 Water Service Replacements Bid Award.
So we had a bid opening last Thursday for the water service replacements. And this would be for the utility-owned water service. So if you remember from the lead service line discussion, the utility owns the water service line between the water main and the curb shut-off in the terrace or near the sidewalk. The water service behind the curb shut-off between that and the home is private. The lead service line replacement program, that part of the service line is being paid through with those dollars that have been awarded by the state of Wisconsin for the private homeowners. As part of the requirement though, for those, that award, we have to replace all of the service lines on the utility side that we have found. So that all the line, the entirety of the lead or galvanized has been removed from service. So when a contractor digs up the private side and it's discovered that it's not copper or plastic, it's a different material. We have been keeping track of those and we put out the bid project to replace those. So this would be, again, to replace those so that we can ask for the funding reimbursement from the private side or for the public or for the private side. The private side work, there is no, or I'm sorry, the public side work, there is no requirement outside of the requirement to be, to receive the funding. The DNR doesn't have a requirement at this time. However, at some point in the future, it's likely that the requirement to replace all its service lines will take effect. So this work is more likely than not to occur at some time in the future. So the fact that we're doing it now rather than later, it doesn't really change that it needs to be done. So I hope I made sense. I stumbled there between utility and private, but any questions, please ask.
Phil, you got anything?
No.
Larry?
No.
Devin?
No.
Teresa?
Just wondering, do you think there will be more after this if we get more money? Or do you think this covers all of them?
We have on the list of people who have inquired in the program, I think there's been almost 200 people who have.
Oh my.
Of that though, of that 200, I think there's around 50 eligible services or maybe 60 now. And again, there's about 20 that we found that are, that are material that we need to replace. That being said, we have a pretty good idea from some records from previous projects. So while they're not 100% accurate, as we've found unfortunately, I don't think we're gonna see a lot more, but I would expect some. How many, I can't say.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Brian?
No question. Mark, you were clear.
Linda?
No questions.
Is there a motion? Can I ask everybody? Right?
I'll make the motion to award the 2021 Water Service Replacements to Fannie Excavating.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries.
I am going to leave if it's okay.
I don't think so. There's team building, there's team building and you're starting first.
Team building. Alright, holy.
Gotta mail it in, Mark.
Mail it in, Mark.
Email me or I'll email you the question. You email me with the response.
I will work on that.
Okay.
Good luck and enjoy. Thanks for joining us.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Discussion and possible action regarding the Police Department Hiring Process Revision to the Commitment Contract.
Just like that, Scott appears. Look at that. Sorry, I had to eat supper and I didn't want you to watch me.
Zoom magic.
So you'll recall that we've already talked about our hiring contract in the last two meetings before now. Well, we had a new, a new circumstance develop. We, for those of you that haven't heard, Jim Schumacher is retiring and his last day is going to be Monday, August 30th. And I did have one person left on my eligibility list, so really, and who also needed the academy, just like Samantha. So it was really the same circumstance, except our local academy had already started and I couldn't get him in there fast enough. So there is an academy that is in Wasawat, North Central Technical College, that has an opening and he's got his final steps of the hiring process to do this week, provided he passes those steps. That academy starts this coming Monday. It is really the same setup as we had before, except that we'll now have travel expenses. And something we didn't build into that commitment process or contract the first time was the reimbursement of those travel expenses. Just like tuition, Department of Justice will reimburse travel expenses if they successfully graduate. So this is really if, to, to, in the, to use in the circumstance that if somebody does not graduate, then they will have to reimburse us for those travel expenses because DOJ will not. So just with the exception of that quick little correction, Mark and I went through it. And just FYI, I think I included this in the memo too. Because of these, you know, we've had two circumstances now where we've done these commitment contracts and we've had little sorts of individual differences in both. I think in the future, I'll bring all of these to you, just so you're aware and can review and vote on. I think that it'll just be more clear down the road rather than just letting me do them each time. So that's where it's at.
Brian, any questions or comments?
No, not really.
Teresa?
No.
Devin?
No.
Larry?
Well, thank you for looking further and finding the opportunity for the person. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that, that, sorry to interrupt. The other option was we wait until January and my staff is already working hard. So I didn't want to wait if I could have avoided it.
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Is there a motion or what kind of action are you looking for?
Approval of the commitment contract.
I would move approval of the revision to the commitment, Police Department Hiring Commitment Contract.
They all do.
Alright, there is a motion and there are multiple seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, guys.
Thank you all.
That has, that motion is approved. Discussion and possible action regarding a donation of medical leave bank.
So we have an employee that kind of had a very serious medical issue that came out of nowhere. And he is in a, in a tough position in which he does not have much left in his medical leave bank or PTO. Our employee handbook does allow for individuals to donate time to individuals who are in a medical emergency situation. And in this situation, Dan Nelson has offered to donate 160 hours of his medical leave bank to this employee. And in the event that the employee doesn't need to use all 160 hours, whatever the balance would be, would be surrendered back, I guess, to the city for lack of a better term. But this is permitted within our handbook and, and I know is much appreciated by the employee if it is to pass.
Ryan, any questions or comments?
No questions, but I think it's a nice thing.
Larry?
No questions. Thank you, Dan.
Devin?
No questions.
Phil?
No questions. Thanks.
Linda?
No questions. Very kind, Dan. Thanks.
Teresa?
No questions. Thank you.
Did I already ask you, Ryan? Okay, that's how I thought. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve. How should I say this? I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of of unused hours from Dan Nelson to the unnamed employee.
Mark has something to say.
Yeah. Thanks, Mark.
It can be as simple, I think, as motion to approve the proposed donation of 160 hours from the Dan Nelson Medical Leave Bank to the, to a employee, another employee in need as determined by the city administrator.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. And thank you, Dan. That was very generous of you. And review of July financial statements. This is all Dan.
There's nothing that sticks out to me at this point. Obviously, there's a lot of things in flux here in the last half of the year. We had some payouts that are happening on this payroll. We have the library roof and lots of other things that aren't accounted for yet in these financials. But there's nothing that's alarming that, and there's certainly nothing that this group isn't aware of that they haven't already approved. So at this point, yeah, we get our million-dollar check next week from the county for tax settlement. So that negative million dollars that you see in Fund 500 will be zero next month. Well, it'll be good.
Yay.
Any questions by anybody? Oh, okay. General items. Larry, do you have any general items?
No, thank you.
Brian?
Nope.
Teresa?
No.
Phil?
No.
Linda?
No thanks.
Devin?
Parks and Recreation met last night. We heard the commission approved new playground equipment for North Goodrich Park. Inga went over the prairie seed collection. I was going to be dispersing a flyer for that. Also went over the new benches and picnic tables that will be at Railroad Park.
Cool. I heard there's a lot of controversy over that new playground equipment, so I'm not sure how it's gonna play out. The removal of a merry-go-round. I just, I don't know if we can accommodate that, the city.
We're putting in a new one. It'll be fine.
It's a break. Anything else for anybody before we move on to staff reports? Uh, Dan, any staff reports?
I am on mute. I just wanted to say thank, obviously, this is my last council meeting as a, as a city employee and I just want to thank everyone for their support over the last seven years. It's been an honor and pleasure. Learned a lot. Hopefully, I've taught you something along the way. And look forward to seeing what happens with some of the big issues that are coming up in the next six to eight months.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Ashley?
Um, we're interviewing applicants for our open library assistant position and we'll hopefully have a decision soon. And then our food truck rally is coming up on Sunday, August 29th from 10:00 to 2:00. The map is on our website and our Facebook event, so come enjoy 12 different trucks scattered around the east side of town.
I feel like that's a lot of trucks. It's a lot of food to eat.
It is a lot of food. Yep, but those, they get long lines, so hopefully it'll be spread out a little bit better.
Get in line early, like what, at 10:00?
Yeah, especially for stormies. If you want stormies, get there early.
Inga?
Sorry, I couldn't find the unmute button apparently. I just wanted to remind everyone that the city treasurer position is open right now for applications and it's closing on Sunday. And then we'll move through the process from there.
Jenny?
On the next city council meeting, we will be, or the council will be reviewing a Class B beer and a Class C winery license for Casa Fiesta on Merchant Row. And then next week, I will be attending the WMCA Clerks Conference in Brookfield from Tuesday till Friday. And then our newest city hall employee, Ashley, is interested in the clerks portion of it. And so she will be attending the new clerks class as part of the conference.
Exciting stuff. Howie?
Okay, we sent out, we sent out three notices to quite a few people and they're doing pretty good response on fixing, cleaning them up and stuff. The disc golf, last two holes are almost finished. The Pork Fest event went well for us. The large fundraiser at Central Park, that went well also. That's a private event, but it seemed to go pretty well. Football and soccer started practicing. Cottonwood had some sidewalk put in today and some curb and gutter. CQC, the sanitary sewer main started this week, so they're starting that work out there. And we've updated the flags at Veterans Park.
Oh, nice. I drove out to that site. There's like 100 earth-moving equipment machines out there. It was like unbelievable.
Yeah.
It's like they're building a whole new city out there.
There's, they said it'll be at least probably six weeks to get all the underground stuff in, so.
It's quite the project. Chief?
So as mentioned before, I got a retirement coming up. Wanted to let you all know that, so what that does until our folks return from academy is we have an opening on second shift and we have an opening on first shift. We are, we're struggling trying to figure out how to schedule our existing staff to meet those vacancies without burning everyone out. I've made the decision that we are going to pull Officer Ryan Schneider from his SRO position. And he is going to be assigned to day shift. He's specifically going to be assigned to day shift so that he can still continue to work with the schools as much as he can. So whether that's interspersed between calls or on days when we have extra coverage, he can dedicate whole days. I have advised Rich Dom and the superintendent of that and assuming he passed it on to the rest of his staff. He knew, Rich and I had a conversation, so we knew the memo was coming and I hadn't heard any follow-up. So that's what's happening with that. By the time we meet again, school will be in session. And just for any members of the public who happen to tune in, the first couple of weeks, it's time to be patient. There's a lot of traffic patterns that need to sort out. Things are gonna slow down. John Paul and Madison will be bad, just like it is every year, and we'll get through it. I have a couple of new crossing guards that are gonna start this fall. And be patient and, and slow down in our school zones for them. That's all I got.
Thanks. Al?
Yeah, 2021 is certainly the year of, of, I don't want to say turnover, that sounds like sometimes a negative word, but certainly a year of changes. Scott just indicated he's got, you know, kind of a surprise retirement in his department. And we've all seen, you know, Ward Edwardsan and Ken Veerick and Brenda Matthews leaving Public Works. And we know Howie's time is, is short. And we just learned this morning of another individual in Public Works that's gonna be retiring. So, you know, it's, it's, Inga's been pretty much constantly recruiting since probably Thanksgiving of last year almost. Ashley's got an open recruitment. We have an open recruitment at City Hall. We have another new employee starting on August 30th. So yeah, it's, it's a lot, a lot of changes. And that'll probably continue through, through the rest of the year, but it's good because it helps, you know, allows us to look at the organization as a whole, as we typically do, and have conversations with the council about, you know, where we think we're headed and what, what we think are priorities. And hopefully that aligns with the strategic plan. So yeah, it's, it's been, it's been an interesting year. And, you know, I would certainly, you know, echo the comments.
you know, echo the comments about Dan's time in the city of Milton. He came at a time when the city was in rough, rough shape, probably more so than what most people knew. And, you know, it's because of Dan and Dan's guidance that we were able to weather that storm and come out better on the other side, so. He certainly won't be replaced by any way, shape or form, but we will find somebody to at least sit in the same chair he did unless he takes his chair with him. I'm not sure. But certainly, you know, Dan came at the right time and, and, you know, has, has done great work and, you know, certainly wish we could have found a way to keep the band together longer, but, you know, not everybody can be the Rolling Stones, so we just keep on plugging, you know, so. Thanks, Dan, for all the stuff you've done for, for us and for me and for the organization and for the city. I don't think anybody really has an idea of, you know, how much your influence has helped them in their day-to-day lives without even knowing it, so. Wish you the best in your next adventure and I'm sure we'll see you around and, you know, you can go on the chamber board or something if you want or, you know. Run for school board.
Fire Commission, I don't know.
Yeah, Fire Commission, yes, yeah. We're going to talk about that shortly in closed session. Maybe we've got something else lined up for you.
Thank you, Al.
Yeah.
I just want, want everybody to know too, I think we're all a lot better looking than the Rolling Stones too, like, there's that.
I don't know, Al looks a little bit like Keith.
Hey, if I can live as long as he did and live the life he did, I'll, I'll look like an old catcher's mitt. That's the least of my worries at that point.
All right, here we go. Make sure you got Mark teed up on the email.
Oh, okay.
And if I need to repeat this, I, I will, okay? It's really easy, super fun. You all are going to do great. I have to take my glasses off to read my writing. All right. Tell me the name of a card game or board game you are playing without telling me the game you're playing.
Uno.
That is not no.
I wasn't talking about the, I wasn't talking about the name of the game. I was talking about one of the plays that you have to make.
Top hat.
Okay, so anybody got a guess of what? Oh, I know.
I do.
Top hat is Monopoly, right?
But.
Right.
Monopoly?
Yeah.
I was going to say, I'm going alone.
Uh, Uker?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to go. I'm going alone.
I just said that.
I know, but there's other games in Wisconsin besides Uker.
Sheep said, sheep said. And no, there are no other games in Wisconsin besides Uker. That is a false statement.
No, sheep, sheep said it's valid. I'll go.
Okay, Larry?
Yat.
Yatsy.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go next. Teresa.
Teresa.
Jo.
That Monopoly too?
Yes.
Or mousetrap.
Yeah, well, there you go. That's true.
Four.
Fort?
Connect.
Connect fort?
Golf.
Did you say fort or four?
Al's got it.
Golf.
Golf?
Golf? Oh, I could have answered that. Howie?
Um, bump.
Baseball?
You say bump?
Oh, bumped.
Uker? Bumped.
Double. Dirty clubs.
I, I was going to say dirty clubs. You're giving up time.
Impassant. That's a challenging one for you guys. There you go.
Was it chess?
Chess.
Yep, chess.
In passing.
Yep.
There goes the pawn.
Nice, Bill.
Jenny?
Princess Lolly.
Candyland?
Yep.
Finally, I got one.
Oh, nice job. I, yeah.
I haven't played it recently, but.
I didn't even know there was a princess in Candyland.
It was my favorite.
Oh, well, this is a common phrase in my house now. I don't want to go all the way back to the candy canes.
Yeah.
You get almost done and then you're, you're back.
Is that what you're playing?
Very often.
Yeah.
So who are we waiting for?
Mark.
Linda?
Mark.
Ashley.
Ashley?
I'm trying to think of all these children's games, but holy cow, there's just so many of them. I'm going to say Chance.
Is that Monopoly?
Yes.
All right, that's it. Nobody can, can do clues from Monopoly anymore.
Well, it's a common game.
Yeah. It came out with a kids' version. It's really cute.
How about in the library?
Oh, I know that one.
Blue.
Blue.
I have a second one.
Do you?
Yeah, hit or miss. Hit or miss.
Battleship.
Yep.
I've never played that.
You need a council game night, clearly.
Yep, we do.
Oh, yeah.
I have a quick collection, but it's in storage.
My sister and I play this one a lot when we were younger. It's an easy one, spit. You say it during the game. Yeah.
Oh, you play nasty games.
You say it or you do it.
Say it. So I pulled this guy. It's called spit. The card game is called spit. And you yell spit.
Tricky, Ashley, tricky.
I have another one.
Okay.
15-2. 15-4.
Oh, um, um, privilege.
Privilege.
Thank you.
Was it Dan and Mark? Dan, are you opting out? You could opt out if it's your, you know, your list.
I, I've got a game that there's only 1,000 that were produced. And it was by a recent Milton High School grad. Um, the name of the company is Snatch. I got it right here. I went and grabbed. Answer chug.
That's good.
Yeah.
It was designed by Ashley's cousin and he went into production and he just got his shipment about two months ago. And there's a thousand of them right now. And I got one of them.
Nice.
Milton's known for a, a board game now.
Really?
So just Mark and Linda?
I already went.
Oh, that's right. So it's just Mark.
This is a challenge because I don't play cards and I don't play board games, so.
But what other game do you play?
What do you do?
Guess I'm boring.
We know you're not.
Cause we have to really teach you some games.
Yeah.
Okay, how about a game? Tell us a game you're watching without telling the game, like, what's the game you're watching?
Say go fish and get it over with.
Yeah, right. I think that's the name. Okay, I, I don't know. Okay, B4.
Inga. Inga.
Inga.
Yeah.
Going.
Or Battleship.
Or Battleship. Just so everybody knows, I did email Mark Langer, so.
Oh.
I get his response during closed session or tomorrow, I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay, okay.
I got another more challenging one if you want.
Sure.
Well, kicking the, kicking the door. Kick in the door. This is not going to be like, it's, I think it's made by somebody in, in Wisconsin, actually.
That used to be an old job of mine.
It's a cop game?
Sounds like cops and robbers.
It's a little more, a little more obscure than your normal household games, but it's, you could buy it at Target.
Really?
At least I think you can. Anybody get the reference? Kick in the door? Yeah, it's a game called Munchkin.
Munch?
Yep, and it sold most game stores and sometimes I've seen it at Target as well, made by a guy, I think at Madison, actually. It makes fun of D and D.
Do you all know what D and D is?
It's not nice at all.
All right, we've made it through another team building exercise and now we go to Brian.
Consideration, nope, go ahead. No, consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19 subsection, or 19.85 subsection 1 EE, delivering or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons required at closed session regarding City of Milton Fire and EMS services, service provisions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, we'll go into closed session now. Is, our next meeting is September 7th, 2021. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I just want to let you know that Mark Langer has not responded yet, so we can't adjourn until he responds.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we're adjourned except for Mark is in a never-ending meeting by himself. Thanks, you guys. Have a good night. Stay safe.